Richmond City School Board Meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk?
Will this call be used for presently respond? Ms. Thorpe?
Here.
Mr. Barlow?
Here.
President?
Ms. Young?
Present.
Ms. Patsy?
Here.
Ms. Carter?
Here.
Ms. Owen?
Here.
Dr. Sapien?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Good evening, school board members. I'm Mr. Herdman. I don't know if I am RPS interpreter. I'm going to make a quick announcement. If anyone needs a Spanish interpreter, please raise your hand. Si alguien necesita intérprete en español, por favor levanta la mano. Con mucho gusto la perderemos. Thank you.
Thank you. Process.
Next item. The next item is your pledge of allegiance to the American Constitution. Ms. McCallum? Thank you, Lady.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is 04. The bachelor agenda. I do have a few changes. 6.02 will be to receive for actual approval of implementation related to Project A. 7.01 is to receive ad hoc or instant government training. And moving to 9.02 up to your academic improvement items. And that will be 7.03, would be received revision to the school board procedures and single the conduct of the current.
Motion to adopt the agenda. Ms. Ray.
Sorry.
That is the move by Ms. Young and properly signed by Ms. Owen. All favor? All the public? Any other public? We have none. Agenda has been adopted as received.
The next item is item two. Your recognition. To 04. Are you recognizing students from the real school agency?
Good evening, school board members. And members and those in attendance at the meeting. As I read this information, each of these students will receive recognition from the board chair and vice chair. So please, our recognition. Receive your recognition from the chair and vice chair. Shake their hand. On Wednesday, December 7, 2016, students from Richmond Education Academy for Learn, also known as REAL, visited the White House to attend the last educational event of President Obama's administration. Students were two of 10 students invited to participate in the White House Tech Jam that meeting on fair fever and assessments. Fair fewer assessments. During the day-long event, students had faced with senior policy advisors, technology development colleagues, and other students from across the nation to provide their feedback on how to improve assessments, reduce the burden of redundant assessment, aligned with the testing action plan. Students were drawn by their teacher, Ms. Coates, the United States Department Teaching Ambassador fellow and a White House Champion of Change educator, and their administrative dean, Ms. Gilmore. The day kicked off with a welcome from the United States Secretary of Education, Dr. John King, who by the way is visiting Richmond personally. And ended with lunch provided by the White House and a private tour of the White House Eisenhower Executive Offices, also known as the West Wing. The principal of REAL School is Mr. Jermaine Harris. The students who are to be recognized today is Ms. Josiah Garvey, eighth grade student. Please step forward. And Mr. Devon Harris, sixth grader. Madam Chair, REAL School is a very unique and special program. So if I could ask you an analogy, because you're obviously a parent. Explain a little about the students here.
Good evening, Vice Chair, Vice Chair, Dr. Ben, superintendent of school board members. I know a guess. REAL School is a program that is quite unique. We are designed especially for students for the comprehensive school just might not provide the level of support that our students need. So they will come to REAL School and we have staff who work with them each and every day. And they teach us just as much as we teach them. And we want to recognize the parents that are here with them today because so much of what we do is not possible without the support of them. So can we just give them a round of applause? And really quick, I'd like to thank Ms. Lisa Coates, who, because of Ms. Coates being involved in that program, the United States Ambassador's Program for Teachers, she actually invited these two students to travel with her to the White House. So we definitely want to thank this person. And my administrative dean, who makes so much happen over at REAL, we also want to thank her as well.
Do we have someone to take their picture?
Go ahead. We get one more. I think we have some parents doing it.
Okay.
Two versions.
Okay. Everybody ready? One, two, three. Have everybody. One, two, three. Next item. Madam Chair, this time you are going to reset your school board meeting into a main public hearing of the superintendent's FY18 estimate of needs in the CIP budget.
We see a public hearing. If we have members in the audience that would like to speak to the superintendent's for year 18 estimate estimate of needs in the CIP budget, please come forward at this time. We have three minutes to speak to this item. Please sign in and state your name.
Good evening, school board chair, vice chair, members of the school board, the superintendent there. My name is Charlotte Hare and I'm president of the Richmond Education Association. The superintendent's estimate of needs contains a commitment for year two of the two-year phase and of the teacher's salary scheduled decompression. We appreciate the commitment to finishing what was started last year as a means of finally putting all teachers on their correct experience step. This is a monumental, or this is monumental, and it does mean a great deal for most of us. For example, I went from step 13 to step 32. Being recognized for your years of service in your profession is a profound recognition for career educators. We expect that each of you will concur since improving teacher salaries was and is a part of your campaign. We also appreciate that there is a 2.5 percent adjustment, a COLA, for the unified schedule. We are happy to see that as a new this estimate request, so that we might help all employees obtain an increase in pay, even though this is just a cost of living increase. In addition, we are also happy to see that new requests for additional nurses, sample the multicultural center, and other things that will help our children improve have been included in this proposal. We also would like to say that as additional things are added, we would also let you know that we would like to weigh in on those issues as well. We thank you for continuing to keep your promises that have been made and we hope that you will continue to advocate for what we need to present.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Hartman. I'm speaking as an individual. The main thing I have to say about the budget is a hearty thank you to the team that put it together. I think it's crystal clear that this team knows what it's doing and that any peanuts thrown from the peanut gallery would be just that, peanuts. In particular, thank you for the marvelous presentation on the website. Your clarity and transparency are exemplary. That said, I have two peanuts to throw your way. First, I urge you each to find a little something in this budget to get started with your own vision. Some camel's nose into the tent. The little tweaks you make this urgent year could grow in ensuing years. Do not wait to start making the difference you want to make until after the urgency of this budget. Get your nose and your camel's nose into the tent. I suggest, for example, that each board member be allocated $1,000 to spend on school matters. The particulars would be reported, but not subject to anybody's approval. The total sum of $9,000 will disappear in the rounding's off. My second peanut is that I ask you to bend way over backwards to accommodate the new mayor. This man, LeVar Stoney, will make a huge difference for Richmond and is destined to be a national figure if we empower him to do and be such. Dr. Ben came in a few short years ago stressing team and trust. Let us build on team. Let us build on trust.
Thank you.
Yes.
My name is Jigililo. I'm PTA president from Green Elementary School. My daughter, she is in fifth grade. I have one question. Richmond Public School created one program, Imagine Learning, for the children in elementary school. In that day, couple days ago, I entered because in Green Elementary, that program don't ruin. I asked Mr. Missins and Mr. Abrego why the program don't ruin in the school. They asked me, because for ruining the school, that program is necessary training of more teachers. My question is, is the Richmond Public School spend money in great one program? It don't give the old meeting for the in the school. They just aware that program. Don't think for why the Richmond Public School spend money, eh, no good? That's it.
Do we have any questions? There was a program called Imagine Learning Center that was supposed to be running in Green Elementary. He spoke to the principal and the superintendent and they said that they have enough personnel to train.
I had to pay the president to go to the company.
Yeah.
Oh, they have enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, I just wanted to inform you that the notice for public comment was noticed in the paper for 6:30. So it is your pleasure. We can revisit this to other members in the audience that would like to speak to the estimate of needs in the CIP budget.
Good evening, 33. The morning is the time for the students' day of learning. And my question to you is, do you have a dream? No, no. Do you have a dream of taking a high school? Well, I bet it would very difficult. My dream is to return to my school in five, six, and high school. Then we feel that I have a name. So my teachers have been my strength and my support. They helped me out. They've always been there for me. And the only school that I've ever known, where I'm scheduled to graduate from freshman's term now. And I do not understand all the legal consequences that has been regarding everything that has happened to me. What I understand is this is supposed to be the best year of my life and RPS has made that the worst of my life. They have turned it into something that is supposed to be memory for me and turned it into the worst thing that has ever happened to me. I wake in the middle of the night with panic attacks. And due to being illegally removed from the only school that I have ever known and the only school that all my friends are at where my brother and I have classes in and I have ever known in my high school years. And I am pleading with the school board to return me back to TJ and to win with the staff immediately at my IEP year. They have violated several IEPs for me. The school staff have violated my IEP repeatedly. And the school admitted on audio that they had violated my rights and everything. So removing me from my school less than six months due to graduation is a violation of me. And our family is pleading with the school board to return me to TJ and allow me to graduate with my class with the only school that I've been in for four years now. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other members in the audience that would like to speak to the budget? Who would like to make sure we give everyone the opportunity to speak? So that's your pleasure. We can come back to the public information and if I'm Miss Myers, time to from hearing. So clarification? We can come back to the public information period. And we have members in the audience. We can resume the public hearing and then allow Miss Myers to make his presentation. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to on item on the agenda? Please come forward. Sign in and state your name.
Again, it's in my understanding that public information is not limited to items on the agenda.
Right.
It's whatever someone can share. Thanks for your patience, everyone. Tom Hartman speaking as an individual. I have not yet digested your various campaign platforms, but I assure you all at least have some valuable constituents who advocate a throw 'em out attitude. Throw 'em out, sweep clean, start over. To do so would be the height of foolishness. Rome was not rebuilt in a day and if you keep laying waste and starting over, you'll never actualize RPS's potential. It'll be like those super highways that only ever had two lanes actually open because they're always digging out to add to the theoretically existing six. If RPS were like a wheat field, that would be one thing. Why isn't production up from last year? With the new hybrids, the new fertilizer, and the new tilling methods, we got to try something different. Or is a school system more like an apple orchard? Look, we planted your new apple trees three years ago. Where the heck are the apples? A three-year cycle is totally unrealistic for an orchard to bear fruit. And if you keep replacing it, all you will end up with is a lot of dead wood. We have the team. Let us sweep away the obstacles, not the team. Postscript thought, I hope the student member will be asked for an idea to improve RPS in keeping with a new policy adopted by last year's silverware.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Any Francis. I'm currently the PTA president for two schools. Jeff Stewart Elementary on San Diego Avenue and Franklin Middle at Real Park. I am here because I have been at several meetings with the presentation of the school budget. I'm in the school for the rest of the year. We need the money now. We need the technology yesterday. Our kids do not compete. Our kids are graduating with no employment skills at all. You have kids who can barely read, who can't write, who can't fill out an application, who can't go down to even apply for services if they're in need of services because they can't make it with the application. Most of these applications that are generated from the Department of Social Services and disability are already on the A4 level. They don't have an A4 visa. At this point, I'm kind of frustrated. The city of Richmond, the council, I feel like if that 40% of the constituents were making over $100,000 a year, I would have moved her. Because we're making less, we're looked over and walked over. And I'm their voice. And you will continue to see me at every meeting and I would be yelling aloud for that. Because right now, we need this money yesterday. It doesn't need to be, what can we cut? What can we go without? We can't cut anything. We can't go without anything. We need new buildings. Our buildings are falling apart. You have teachers who have health problems because of the most, there's some issues in some of these schools. The morale of the teachers are down. You have our teachers working two jobs so they can't stay out to help two of the kids that's going behind. Because you're not paying them enough to even stay behind to help that student out. A teacher is, everything you do in this world, you have to count on the teachers. I don't care who you are. They are our most valuable asset. And the fact that we are underpaid is a disgrace. And we should be ashamed of ourselves. I am strongly advocating that we get the full funding. Wherever you have need me, that's where I'll be, the loudest and the most vocal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robert Lawrence. I received a phone call from the Office of Instruction and they told me that I can not attend my office. And they told me that I can not attend my office, swear me in, or not swear, but induction into the, Armstrong Kennedy Hall of Fame. They said it was the director from Dr. Rand. I don't know how she got the fool to tell me if they had me from any school. I didn't get any letter from Richmond Public Schools. But I got a letter and she stated something that I'm afraid to say to children and people at school, honestly, that's what I got. And, uh, I'm very disturbed about this because I come to speak and talk before you about her last issues that I had with, and she's telling me that I can't attend the games. So I'm like, somebody need to tell me something. And this is foolishness. And there's other undertones also. I would deny the foil that I was asking for the budget for Richmond Public Schools athletics. No one would give it to me. They told me that I couldn't have it. So I wanted to know what's the deal. This has to stop immediately. And Ms. Carter, as my representative, I would like for you and the rest of the school to get to the bottom of this and stop this foolishness from Dr. Rand's intention. And you are, I came to you before the last meeting, and nothing was, nothing was taken care of. And I wanted to get, this is, this is not right, this is unfair, and I'm not going to have it anymore. So let's get this taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Each and every one of you happy 2017. Great to see giving honor to the senior candidate and to the chair and vice chair, to the newly elected school board. I'm glad I'm a part of this school because there's several issues. When a student's face, I am T'Kwan.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, I am so sorry. I'm T'Kwan's Mayor Grant. I'm a student, junior at Thomas Jefferson High School. Go Vikings. This year, I would love to work with some of the school board members on the open enrollment, on the open enrollment case. I've talked to Mr. Horn several times. I'm a legislative senate legislative intern for, now Senator Jennifer McGollum. So I work closely with education as one of our key goals. I want to work especially in the area of transportation with the open enrollment students. By my understanding, the open enrollment students have to have provide their own transportation. I want to see if there's money left in the budget, see if we can fit families of open enrollment students that have a tough time affording that transportation. It's hard sometimes. I live in Hilton Court, and it's hard waking up six o'clock in the morning, trying to beat to the point that I have to find my own transportation. I have to ask church members to provide me ten dollars once every other week to provide me the, the opportunity and privilege to catch the city bus, to get, to catch two buses, Gemma Park and the Monument, one on the Broad Street sixty, in order to get a great education at Thomas Jefferson High School. I feel like that's kind of absurd. I feel like every student should get their best education, and if they don't have the resources, that program should not be cut off for that student just because they can't find the right transportation. I feel like some programs should help. We have all these programs in RPS, but they're not really helping the ones in, in the open enrollment.
One second.
Thank you. I just ask that this year I can communicate with some of the newly elected school board, give an honor to Ms. Cosby. I work close with your predecessor, Ms. Maham, and I'm looking for it and working closely with it. And to Ms. Carter, we give an honor to you, too. I know your door. So, uh, I just, thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience? Would like to speak to an item on the agenda? So all members, we can go back to the public hearing. Budget. Ms. Myers.
Evening, Chair and Board.
Just want, would like to check again to see if there are any other members in the audience that would like to speak to the budget. Please come forward at this time. Since we have one, then we close the public hearing and move forward. Next item.
Madam Chair, the next item is, um, item six, the notice loading. Six point oh one, receive the notice loading update.
And then clerk, more members, at this time, we would like to switch item six point oh two first, and then six point oh one. Yes, the presenters are here for six point oh two. Sorry, more members, the, um, presenters. So we will, to save as, save it on the agenda.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Ben. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm James Pickrell. I'm a partner at Commvault Strategy Group, which is a government relations firm just down in Richmond. We provide government relations services to the school board. This is my partner named Cypher, who helps, and our associate Mark Pickman, who also works on these issues and is with us. I've got a lot to talk now. I think we only got about fifteen minutes, so I'm going to try to be concise, give you guys an opportunity to ask your questions that you might have. So let's start with some history because the board was interested in hearing about that. We were hired last year during the twenty sixteen session. The session had already gone, and we retained. Obviously, that wasn't conducive to any sort of pro act legislative agenda. And so mostly what we focused on was defense, advocacy of certain bills and budget items that RPS was interested in. First task we were given was to have budget amendments introduced relating to supplemental funding for LCI for the city of Richmond. We actually had three budget amendments introduced, patron by Senator, Senator McLoughlin, Senator McKishen, and Delegate Fatsi-Corn. All three of those amendments worked for three million dollars over a biennium, or five billion per year. None of those amendments, as probably most projects, were successful. We were also instructed to lobby on behalf of support of Delegate Bagby's bill, which dealt with expulsion from school for misdemeanor offenses. That bill did pass House of Education, won vote of fifteen to seven, so that's a win. However, when it got to the floor of the House, the courts committee felt that they should have seen that bill also as referred to be referred back to courts, which it was. The problem being that courts wasn't going to be anymore, which effectively killed the bill. In addition to that, in addition to that, we set up a floor, Armstrong, George Mason, with Delegate Jimmy Massey at the Marico. For those of you who don't know, Delegate Massey is the subcommittee chair of the Education Subcommittee on House Appropriations. They're the ones that really sort of come up with the funding and things of that nature. We wanted to show that some of the facilities problems. Mr. Prans is accompanying us on that. I think that was probably a pretty successful outing for Delegate Massey, certainly very educational for him. I'm glad to report that during the twenty sixteen session, no legislation negatively impacted RPS, and no budget actions negatively impacted RPS were successful. So that is a good thing. Post session, post twenty sixteen session, we set up meetings with individual school board members, sort of try to sharp the allow, let their legislative interest work in hopes of building a proactive agenda for the twenty seventeen session. We did meet with some folks, as you know, most of the school board was up, all schools up reelection. Everybody was in campaign mode, not really a conducive to develop a nice legislative agenda for legislative policy, which we hoped to do. We were also instructed to begin working on a bill that would authorize RPS to include law enforcement and broader education training. We secured patron and then delegate Senator McLoughlin, and talked with the Department of Education. It was revealed that RPS already had this authority, and therefore the legislation was not needed, so didn't go forward. And so before I start going into this session, let me stop right there and ask any of the board members to have questions about our past activities. So that brings us up to the twenty seventeen session, and we provided you with two lists. One is a comprehensive list of bills that we sent out and reviewed, that we was going to buy, have, either be of interest or of potential interest, with positive magnitude to RPS. You guys have several mechanisms where Dr. Carter and Mr. Marlowe reviewed those bills. I believe they done that last night. We haven't had a chance to discuss that yet. At least send that update out every week. For your convenience, we also provided this, which breaks all the bills that have been introduced so far in some fairly broad categories. And we've taken the liberty of suggesting what we think are priority bills based on what we know to be sort of RPS's continued interest. So on priority bills, we focused on Richmond delegation, because it's important for us to support their bills when we can. And if we have a problem with a bill, or a bill that represents Richmond, they certainly need to know about our concerns and need to be talking about that. We've put long-term suspension bills in, things that were that nature of the school prison pipeline, which I know you guys are very concerned about, and also bills that might have a severe physical impact on RPS. As you can see, the bill list is extensive. I think we've done thirteen, fourteen priority bills, which maybe helps you guys focus a little bit. Those bills are just suggestions. If you see something on there that you don't think is quality, or if you see a bill on the bill list that you think shouldn't be a quality, please feel free to let us know. And so what we need to do now is, we need to actually develop initiatives to either support our opposition on individual pieces of legislation so that we know when we go down to the General Assembly, we'll be able to work on it. You guys, and I'm not going to go through all the bills since I only have a short amount of time. You guys have the bills and bill summaries. If you have questions, know that you can call me at any loss, anytime. We're always available. Do you guys right now have any questions about any of the bills or how we categorize them or our policy? Okay, great. So what we hope to do post-session, and this is what we talked about with previous school board, and what we hope to talk about with you guys, post-session, what we're going to want to do is to, again, send an invitation, you individually, to find out what your personal legislative priorities are. We really think that RPS should be a leader in education policy. We are the school board of the capital state. We have a lot of advantages, plus our proximity to the General Assembly, that a lot of school boards don't. We've had Dr. Ben come down several times to testify last year. If our House appropriations is a really good opportunity for using individual school board members to come down to the General Assembly and test follow-up bills that RPS thinks are important. Not all school boards can do that. I think that it would be helpful for you guys if we developed a policy on recurrent themes in K through twelve education. There are certain subjects we see every year down at the General Assembly. And how the policy of those bills takes a lot of pressure off of you guys and lets us know immediately what we have to do. So things like charter schools, invertible schools, student discipline, and funding issues, and things of that nature. There are several school divisions that have these sort of policies already made up. We'd like to share those with you as a group of people who can do. And I think that would be a lot to sort of give us our marching orders as soon as possible. If we want to, and I think we should, develop a proactive legislative agenda, we really need to start doing that in June at the latest. The budget that is going to be developed later on this year will be a new two-year budget. It will be Governor Hull's last budget. And again, really putting a good budget together and finalizing it in October, it's releasing December. Any budget actions we want to take, we should take as soon as possible. Any proactive legislative items that we want to develop and push forward, we should begin that to do at the latest, which will give us time for lobbying General Assembly members, building coalitions, talk to our other school divisions around the state that might have similar concerns. That concludes my remarks, and I'm glad to take any questions you guys have.
Mr. Roy, um, one question on this year's budget. Are you all hearing any opposition or pushback on initial appropriation of the Russian teacher residency program, concerns, and so forth?
So I had a conversation today with Kelly Brass about this issue. She's indicated that they have asked for, at least she represents for city's coalition, they have asked for several legislative amendments for additional, I think, two million dollars for that program. Legislation coming out Wednesday, is that correct? So tomorrow, all of the legislative amendments that are offered by members of the General Assembly will get discussed. And so we'll be able to see all of that. Can talk with Chris Jones, who's the chairman of House Appropriations. He's indicated to us that he wants to keep hatred for old. That doesn't necessarily include extra language, but that is something, as I'm sure this program does the work, and if we see a little of it forward, we are happy to go down and take it forward.
Mr. Pickrell, I would like to thank you and make you public aware. Our board representatives will be Ms. Carter and Mr. Marlowe, so we are fully excited and looking forward to challenging and supporting public education for Richmond Public Schools.
Thank you very much. I would like to represent the public schools.
Next item.
The next item is six point oh two, receive for action approval documentation related to project ACE. ACE.
Madam Chairman, I apologize for the lateness of the impact statement, which isn't how we're going to operate, but in light of all the ongoing conversations, it's something that had waited for that minute. For the past year, Altria Corporation have been working with Richmond Public Schools. They are, you know, an entity that has been a huge supporter of Richmond Public Schools and desires to continue and expand that partnership. As a result of that relationship, they have agreed to donate to Richmond Public School entity, that will be a 501(c)(3), a 288,000 plus or minus square foot warehouse and office facility, as well as 10.07 acres of land that sits on, including parking. This particular facility will be used to enhance and expand the educational opportunities RPS. While there's not one specific purpose to the building today that something we'll be working on during the next year, because Altria will lease the property from us through December 31st of 2017. The possible uses of that facility will be the redesign of the Richmond Technical Center, our career and technical offerings, expanding our new academic program offering, enhancing the environment, community, existing programs, and then expanding our career academies as well as our career and technical education programs. And those are just some of the possibilities that this particular facility can. It's a state-of-the-art facility. As I think you've heard me say before, I believe that this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for RPS to receive such a facility that has been maintained impeccably. It has a full mechanical system on the first floor, and this is something, you know, unusual for us to get in a donation of this kind. With that, the request tonight is for the school board to authorize the school board chairman and the superintendent to sign all the relevant documentation related to the creation of the 501(c)(3), the donation agreement itself, and then the lease agreement between the 501(c)(3) entity and Altria Corporation, or whatever related entity that they call it.
Do we have any questions for the school board and superintendent?
I think it might be helpful for the...
Yes.
I think it might be helpful just because we have so many critical facilities needs in Richmond, just for the public, we've had the privilege of getting a little bit of background on this exciting opportunity, just for the public to understand how this affects the facility's improvement plan, if at all.
This actually will not have any impact from taking dollars away from the needs that have been identified in schools and using those dollars for this particular project. If anything, what this particular project will do, because of the state of the facility, because of the opportunities that are unique in how we build them out and design that facility, if anything, I believe it'll free up dollars that were identified in the facilities plan that were going to be used for renovation, or new addition, or, you know, actually new construction, and now those dollars will be available for, you know, for another school. So I think all it does is it leverages it, and it expands the opportunities for that dollar.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Young.
Just like to, at the time, incorporate knowledge, Charlie Aging in the audience from Altria. Charlie's been a terrific friend to me at Virginia State University for a long time, and that he is a terrific friend to Richmond Public Schools should be no surprise to anybody who's in Altria's stuff, he speaks volumes for his companies, serious education.
Thank you, Mr. Young, and we want the opportunity for representatives from Altria to come up to us, well.
He's been invited and denied. Come on, Charlie, you're going to get up. As you saw, I was trying to force his on earlier when I was coming up.
Sure, I can add, but.
Any questions for Mr. Young?
I don't have any questions for him, ma'am chairman, but now that you're standing in front of us, thank you. I want to speak for everybody around this table and convey my gratitude.
It's our pleasure. You've been actively supporting RPS for like 13, 14 years of group financial support, and our volunteers and other support. This is another great opportunity, we felt like, to support the prestigious...
Now, on behalf of the board, to begin, thank you for this partnership, and thank you, as you stated, the years that Altria has supported and worked for Richmond Public Schools, providing endless opportunities for our students. Thank you.
Mr. Ballin?
I'm going to approve the recognition, which is by Mr. Krantz and Oprah, the chair and superintendent, to execute the documents related to this donation.
It's been approved by Mr. Ballin and seconded by Mr. Young to receive the recognition for approval from the Altria to authorize the school board chair and superintendent to execute any applicable documentation and acceptance of this donation. On the favor, in discussion, I'm jumping ahead on myself. In discussion?
If we have none, on the favor, the board call. The motion's made by Mr. Young, yes. Mr. Marlowe?
Yes.
Mr. Ballin?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Chaffrey?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Spade?
Yes.
She passes. The next item on the agenda is to examine the elements of the items, several that we are honored to receive and the kinds that are done.
Good evening, Director Andre, thanks, Superintendent Superintendent for Acting Services. I have a little... You have not met our new director for curriculum and instruction, Mr. Rose. Mr. Rose joins us most recently from BDOE supervising science and a member of other departments, content area, Stafford County covered schools as well. And he is working with Ms. Arseneau now, which early childhood Head Start, early Head Start program under that office. And also Kara Arseneau, who is the manager for early Head Start program. We offer to the prior board some information about governance of our Head Start program and some responsibilities that are expected of board members, as well as district administration. And Ms. Arseneau is going to share that information with you this evening.
Good evening. As the panel says, my name is Kara Arseneau, and I'm the early Head Start Head Start manager for Richmond Public Schools. Tonight, my presentation and my goal is to provide you with some information on your role as the school board, your role and responsibilities as it relates to the early Head Start Head Start program. This training is required annually by the federal government, and it has a lot of information. There are tons of regulations and performance standards, and I know tonight you will not be knowing all of the standards and everything that is expected of you, but throughout the rest of the school year, you will be given opportunities to attend trainings, conferences, or participating in programs that can enhance your knowledge on the early Head Start Head Start program. Please sign me at any time throughout my presentation to ask any questions that you may have. As the Richmond School Board, you are responsible for our early Head Start Head Start program. As the governing body, you are expected to fulfill certain duties and responsibilities. One of your first duties is duty of care, which means you will act carefully and deliberately when handling the program's business, attend regular attendance that you need and is needed, and becoming knowledgeable about our program, and seeing as to that action and decision of the board are documented, acknowledged, and are approved. Your second duty is duty of loyalty, which means to act in the interest of the program, which includes supporting and advancing the program's mission. And the last duty is duty of obedience, which means you are to follow the rules and ensuring that the program is following the rules in accordance with the federal performance standards and Head Start standards. So the term governing board is used interchangeably with the federal government, because most board teams are either path agencies, community agency programs, they vary. So for you guys, you are considered the school board, but I will also use several governing bodies interchangeably. The federal regulations define what the board should look like. The school board can be the governing body, or you can elect to form a committee that represents the governing body. Historically, the Richmond School Board has always served as the governing body. The federal government requires that anybody serving as the governing body represents background in each one of those areas. At least one member has to have expertise in fiscal management or accounting. One member has to have background expertise in early childhood education and development. One member who is a licensed attorney and who is familiar with issues that may become with the board. One member who reflects the community and includes parents of former or current in more Head Start children. And other members selected can be selected for their expertise in education, business administration, or community affairs. So that's just the makeup of the composition of the school board or governing body. So one of the regulations states the program must establish a way of having a formal structure of shared governance. This just describes how information is shared between families, the program, and the school board. And as you can see, the way we do that, information goes from parent committees to policy council and school board. Parent committee, we have 922 preschoolers, and we have 56 infant and toddlers. Our preschoolers are three and four-year-olds, our infants and toddlers, we take them anywhere from six weeks to two and a half years old. We provide those services through 10 licensed childcare centers, four preschool centers, and two elementary schools. We also have a delegate that is in Petersburg, and they provide services to 136 children there, and we also provide services to families, inclusion, and parenting. Every parent enrolled in the program is a member of the parent community. From that parent community, they select someone that's good to serve on the policy council, which is the administrative level at our office. Those members are comprised of our parents and community executives. They're elected annually. The school board comes into play because one, at least one representative of the school board should participate in our policy council meeting. And that's the way to make sure information is shared. Our parents give the information to the reps to share a policy council. I share information about our program. The school board gives information about the board, what's happening on the school board level. It goes back to the policy council, and those parents are expected to bring it back to their parent community level. So information goes down to up and back down. So I wanted to show you a little bit more about your primary roles as it relates to our Head Start program. The legal responsibility. Federal government just says you make sure we are complying with the federal and state laws. And it's the performance standards, the Head Start Act, and we also have to adhere to the Virginia Department of Social Services standards. One of the biggest changes that was made to the performance standards this year is that by November of 18, all of the sites that I have early Head Start and Head Start in have to be enrolled in the Virginia QRIS, which is the Virginia Quality Rating and Improvement System. This is just another way to make sure that we are exceeding what is being asked of us in all of our sites. Fiscal responsibilities, you are ensuring that the money that the federal government is given to us is used in an appropriate manner for what is expected. The federal government does monitor reviews related to fiscal, and RPS also intrusive in their audits as well. So to make sure that all of the stakeholders have the accurate information needed to make decisions about our program and to ensure that we're maintaining, we're in compliance, I put a list of reports there, which outlines the frequency you will receive it, the body who receives it, and the action that is needed by the board. Financial statements, directors' report, the self-assessment, corrective action plans are done internally. The community assessment is done every three years. The PIR, which is the Program Information Report, is done annually in August, and then the financial audit is determined by RPS in the Office of Head Start. Some of this information, when the representatives sit on the policy council, they will receive that information, and it's their responsibility to bring it back to you guys and take the appropriate action that is needed. Some additional documents, communication from the Office of Head Start. Often, they will notify if there's any changes to our program liaison, if there's any addendums to the performance standard. All of that information is normally directed to the board chair, and then the copies are also given to you back. Monitoring notice, when they review our program, we get a two-week notice. Sometimes they can do a surprise visit, but they normally send a letter, and you will receive a copy of when they will be monitoring our program. If we have any findings from the monitoring, we have to develop a corrective action plan, which requires your approval. Our funding application is done every year in April, so on this policy council, the representatives will participate in the budget committee, which is a subcommittee at that policy council, to help us implement and develop that budget, and then bring it back to the whole entire board to approve. And then program procedures, as changes occur, then what happens at policy council being brought back for the approval and not... So how do we know if Head Start is effective? There are many ways we can determine if our program is doing what we say we're doing. One of them is our annual self-assessment that happens in either February or March, and it's where the policy councils and community representatives get together and monitor our program internally, as well as our delegate in Petersburg. The Office of Head Start also does monitoring, the federal review monitoring, in each one of those areas, environmental health and safety, fiscal, Ursa, classroom assessment support system, and comprehensive services. They notify to their companies, they interview parents, staff, and often will interview board members as well. We also measure our educational success, we will take house and the career curriculum assessment. Both are done three times a week. And if you would like a copy of any of our past reviews, I can make sure that everybody receives a copy who would like to have. So more reason we received a review on June 7th through the 8th from leadership government and management, where they looked at our relationship with our governing body, which is the school board, as well as the administrative level for the, for the program. What happens with that, a team comes out, they review documents, they interview individuals, and they write up a report. Six weeks to eight weeks later, we get that report, and there are four areas we can have. We can be compliant, non-compliant, areas of concerns, or deficiencies. So in our review, review 7th through the 8th, we received the following areas of compliance. We were successful in recruiting and hiring trained qualified staff to ensure high-quality services to children. Our program made sure those staff members were supported through training, that we made sure we collected reports, records, and data to make sure we were giving high-quality service to our children, the self-assessment, and our approval plan was used to measure our progress. So those were our areas of compliance. We had six areas of non-compliance, which will require corrective action... our program internally, as well as our delegate in Petersburg. The Office of Head Start also does monitoring, the federal review monitoring, in each one of those areas, environmental health and safety, fiscal, Ursa, classroom assessment support system, and comprehensive services. Um, they notify to their companies and interview parents, staff, and often will interview board members as well. We also measure our educational success, we will critique house and the career curriculum assessment. Both are done three times a week. And if you would like a copy of any of our past reviews, I can make sure that everybody receives a copy who would like to have. So more recently, we received a review on June seventh through the eighth from leadership government and management, where they looked at our relationship with our governing body, which is the school board, as well as the administrative level for the, for the program. What happens with that? A team comes out, they review documents, they interview individuals, and they write up a report. Six weeks to eight weeks later, we get that report, and there are four areas we can have. We can be compliant, non-compliant, areas of concerns, or deficiencies. So in our review, review seven through the eighth, we received the following areas of compliance. We were successful in recruiting, hiring, and training qualified staff to ensure high-quality services to children. Our program made sure those staff members were supported through training. That we made sure we collected reports, records, and data to make sure we give a high-quality service to our children. The self-assessment, and our approval plan was used to measure our progress. So those were our areas of compliance. We've had six areas of non-compliance, which will require corrective action plan that was completed, which you guys will receive a copy, review, and approve, or make suggestions for changes. Some of the areas, the biggest area between one through five was that we didn't work closely with the school board members to make sure they knew everything that was happening in our program. Um, as the program manager, it's my responsibility to make sure you guys are aware of your role and responsibility. And while some members were aware, there was not enough documentation to show that all board members were aware and approved those items. So that's why we're in the corrective action plan, we're asking that the information is brought back to you guys, and it's once a month, and you can acknowledge and approve that you have received that information as well. And then the last one has to do with our health and safety monitoring. Our staff does health and safety monitoring on each classroom every other month. Sporadically, I go through and I monitor those to make sure the follow-up is being done. There was one that slipped by me, and I did not review it. So immediately, I reviewed it, made sure the follow-up was done, and had it corrected. So to make sure it doesn't happen again, I'm going to present those findings to our policy councils every month and have the follow-up done to remind me that I need to make sure that I need to do that. So those were our six areas of non-compliance. One area of concern had to do with our annual report to the public. It was published, but she didn't feel that it was easily accessible to members of the community. So it is put on our website. We also will post it in our office, and parents will also receive a copy. So we'll make sure that it's visible for anybody visiting our website to see as to what happened. We did not have any areas of deficiency, which is great for that, um, that review. So the next step with that is I have the, um, full report of the federal monitoring review that we can make sure you receive, as well as the corrective action plan. And I ask that you review it and actually next grievance approve those, or make any changes or recommendations. Any questions? Any questions?
Hi. Yes. My, oh, my, sure. So can you, can you give us a little more insight into why, uh, why, why the board advocated their responsibility for the fiscal oversight and why it wasn't operating budget approved?
The annual budget was actually signed, and it was approved at the policy council level because I think Mr. Coleman was our representative. At that particular meeting, he was not there. And it was partially my fault because I shouldn't have made sure that the rest of the board members received that and actually approved it. So it was approved on the policy council level. It just didn't start though when Mr. Coleman wasn't at the meeting to make sure other members of the, um, board was able to review that and approve the budget. But nothing illegal was done. It was signed and the policy council did approve that. We just needed one step further.
And can you tell us a little bit more about the timely and accurate information piece that was number four?
Sure, sure. Again, the information was shared always at policy council. The next step of making sure that it got to every board member was not done. So I would give information maybe sent to Mr. Born, but I did make sure everybody and include my supervisors received it to make sure that the whole entire board could receive it. You, you as board members should be receiving our reports monthly. And if somebody's not at a meeting and they can't participate, you're telephoned, then it's still my responsibility to make sure that it gets to you guys, and that's where the drop was.
Great. I want to encourage you to see that we've got a landing board.
Yes.
Any other questions?
The only thing we will need from you board members, um, is a representative who's willing to sit on policy council. We meet the fourth Thursday of every month at eleven o'clock. If you can't participate, you can do that by phone. Um, we do have some flexibility in moving the meetings. We do do some in the morning, we do some in the evening, it's whatever the group is feasible for the entire group. So we do need at least one member to participate in that house, in the policy council.
Thank you. And you will have four of them to take. Is that a line for?
Yes, so our next meeting is next Thursday. Next Thursday.
It's good to go.
And whoever it is, if they can't come, we certainly would like their participation by phone and to move all of the approval and program reports to the beginning of the meeting. So if they have to go, then they would at least have received the information that is due. So we do have some flexibility.
So you can give a little bit more about the board's. I'd like to move to a firm that would receive this training and then provide the answer.
Any questions? I'm sorry, is there more about Mr. Law and Senator, now Mr. Born? Any discussions? We'll call it notes in the floor.
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Pergel?
Hi.
Matt Sutcliffe?
Yes.
Ms. Calhoun?
Yes.
Ms. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
And this one?
Yes.
Good morning. The next item is seven point eight, we're sort of receiving revisions to the school board procedures as stated as found up to currently.
Board members, this lady, will explain the revisions to this policy.
Basically, what's in our board members, good evening to everyone that I have to say to the audience. Um, basically, every year, the board, um, purged policy, um, takes the time to affirm the current conduct policy for the school board. Um, I do understand that, so that was slated to be on the agenda today as item nine point four two. But I understood, um, recently that you all would like to make a change, a slight change to the policy, and so before you affirm it, I've, you know, thought that you probably want to receive that change. Um, and so basically, what you have in the policy revision summary is the, is the change. Um, and you'll see that basically, on item two, um, rather than stating and responding to questions, in this section of the policy, which talks about how board membership properly communicate and publish, it indicates while communicating in a public forum and using social media, school board members share. And so that is the only change that is, um, being made or proposed to this particular policy. And your process for policy revision is that you receive two readings of a policy. Um, typically, uh, it would be slated as your first read. During your next meeting, you will have the second reading of the policy, and you can approve that, uh, the change at that particular time. Uh, in the event that board members, um, just in general, uh, want to move from that policy or, um, approve the policy at, for one reading, you would need to vote. And you would need a two-thirds majority, which you would, you would need to vote to suspend the policy, that's, oh, for, to suspend your policy, and you would need two-thirds of vote to do that. Um, so that in, in the event that in the future you want to, I don't know how urgent this particular policy revision is, and so it could follow the normal course of a first and second week. But in the event in the future, um, you all would want, if you would like to suspend your policy and approve any, any policy that particular day, um, you would have to make a motion if you so, you would need two-thirds votes, which are you all, will be six members to vote any, to suspend the policy, and then to, um, then to make the change to the policy. Does that make sense? But for now, uh, since this was done today, what we will do is make sure that this is uploaded to the board docs, so that the public will know what the revision is, and you can go on during your next meeting, if that's your pleasure.
So board members, the second read will be at, uh, for six years, the second read.
I've only been made aware of one revision, so if there are more, please let me know and we can, um, are there more revisions? Okay. In light of that, we'll bring it forward, um, again. I just didn't want you necessarily to affirm your policy without having accounted for your revision. So we'll, we'll, we'll figure that out and bring it forward again. The additions and additional revisions are going to be forward again as, as a first one.
First is Cosby.
If there are. Now that I know that there are additional revisions, I think it would be unfair that it would be another, a first read, and we vote from there at that point. I don't know how substantive the revisions are, but we'll take it from there. All right?
Thank you.
Good morning. Next item is item eight, legislature, item eight, consider one, starts to see defendants and what you can estimate these in the two thousand eighteen twenty-two year old.
Good evening. We begin, Madam Chair, members of the board, to present, uh, tonight, we'd like to continue on FYE and budget discussion, continuation from last week. Uh, there's a brief agenda that follows, um, almost exactly the, uh, the letter that the board had prepared for the administration, um, and trying to continue in the path that it looks like the board wants to, to approve. Uh, we put this up, and, uh, tonight, a couple of things I'd like to do with you is, um, we have some additional information from last week that, uh, really different ways to look at some of our information, our, our budget and our staff. Uh, I'd like to share that with you. There was a question about, um, uh, how positions are classified between instruction, instructional support, and, uh, just regular support positions. Um, so I, I'd like to just see if, if this is still a little, the board to move forward with, uh, open discussion between the board and administration, looking for some more detail about how we're structured and what those budgets look like. Um, and I would like to begin with, um, just a calendar update to make sure that we're all, um, that we're all advertising, uh, the right, uh, nice kinds of locations. So if that's okay, we'll, uh, we'll go into the calendar. I would like to pause and just introduce Lynn Braga. I think everybody knows her. She's our budget director, uh, excellent, and has been doing this for many years, um, and, and current information, almost immediate. So, um, if you guys have specific requests, uh, she's a wonderful resource. So with regard to our calendar, the highlight, three items. We are scheduled to have a work session, so that's not a regular board meeting. We're doing only budget that night, uh, unless you amend the agenda, of course. Um, Monday, the twenty-third, Tuesday, a second work session, again, only budget work session unless you amend the agenda. Uh, at Holton on Tuesday, the thirty-first, uh, and then, uh, your final regular board meeting, uh, that has a work session and budget approval scheduled for February the sixth, however, we'll just. Um, just kind of looking for general, yes, consensus that, that this is the calendar we want to follow.
Great.
Madam Chair, this is just, we've already had place, you know, potential, as board made, location being verified, there's a few of them going on, so we just need to lock it down, lock it in, this is two schools, this is all the conversation. I just, I don't know, I don't know if it's going to be really well, we'll just, hey, make sure we put it out there, as you see that, and make sure it's, very much.
I'm fine, thank you.
Excuse me, my, um, ensuring that our student representative is okay with timing?
Yes, I'm fine. It's a pleasure to be here, I'm actually, I just want to thank you, we have Richmond Community High School, we're standing in the invitation. I've enjoyed meeting you all, and I trust that you all make the best decisions for our students and our school board, I mean, school system, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all set? Before we continue on with, um, the prepared information, we did have something that just came to us very late today, and we wanted to bring to the board's attention. Uh, you may have heard of a new regional program called Code RBA. Um, the previous school board, uh, committed, uh, to participate with that, and we just found out that we have fifteen slots allocated for the school division. Obviously, this would be, uh, an addition revision to the budget information that you're already looking at. Uh, but we wanted to share that, we think that's very exciting. Um, and if you have any questions, Dr. Chambers is available to talk about the program itself.
All right, Ms. Cosby.
Yes, this is a, a regional school that will really focus on computer science for students who are, um, really, it's going to serve a couple of purposes. One, students, bringing students into STEM fields who are traditionally not in that area. So students will be able to earn a high school diploma, they'll have opportunity to earn an AA degree because we'll have partners from, um, the community colleges. There are several businesses in the area that are part of this project. So for example, CarMax and, um, University of Virginia, uh, I believe Altria might be a part of it, I have to go back and take a look. I do have a little bit of, of written information that I can share with you tonight, but Richmond will have fifteen slots. There is not, there is an application, but there are not, uh, scholastic or academic requirements to be a part of this program. There's an application because it will be run on a lottery system. So, all of the details have not been ironed out just yet. We are preparing, it's supposed to start September two thousand seventeen, um, so we are really getting prepared and geared up. There are information sessions, um, we have one that will occur January eighteenth at MLK, so parents, we can get the information out through our schools, so parents can come and get information about that program. Um, lots of hands-on, project-based learning, again, computer science, personalized learning, uh, using technology, those kinds of, of attractions for students to get and prepare for the society that we, that we function in.
To make it a little bit central and simple, it's another version of where we are, Ms. Maggie Walker, in mathematics, it's a type of, um, collaborative, it was all in the school issues in the region, uh, so it's probably through, under seats and anticipation for, uh, so each one of the schools had to articulate, you know, under seats, so we could try to, um, um, we, I talked about, just, we're just getting out by, uh, guidance that says, we're all out, so there's been about a seat, ten thousand dollars per student. So the worst case would be fifteen students, a ten thousand, they were modeling at the center cost today for Maggie Walker's, her students.
Ms. Born? And Ms. Cosby?
May I direct you to assume that these fifteen slots will be spread out all, overall grade levels, or is the first year of the school to be?
It's high school.
Right. So is this new incoming class going to be a class of all freshmen, or is this going to be?
I believe that will be all freshman. I do have, uh, Mr. Rose, who is going to be our backup tonight, who may be able to provide some additional details.
So it's, it's more rising, uh, freshmen and sophomores. So it won't just be a cohort that's, that's entering in the freshman year, there's probably a few sophomores as well.
Okay, and then do we have an idea of how many students will be heading to Syria at twelve?
Twelve will be on there.
Okay.
Ms. Cosby? So, yeah, we said the cost of this, maybe a thousand per participant, obviously?
Yes, and then, the way the agreement is not to receive that amount, because it's on the issue that it's not to receive a lot of, you know, so, the agreement is signed of not to receive ten thousand.
Can you pass away the, uh, contact?
We'll get, uh, the collaborative, the administration informing it, and then we'll be able to pay other students.
So it's a non-profit, can you?
No, it's all public. No, it's all public. It's, 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 it's all the, the school districts in the region, we agree to buy seats. So these seven students, Maggie Walker, now you have to pay, you have to attend, so the same concept is there.
This is not a private, who's actually the student, who's the resources?
The school.
The school system.
Call RBA.
That's not a nonprofit, but that's.
No, it's an actual, it's our students, public schools, it's, it's, it's a public school, uh, regional school, that's just funded by, uh, so what happens is, is just like we know, it's a superintendent, uh, supervises the director. The board members, uh, the governing board, the representative of each district, they bought seats, so like this board will have a representative, to sort of, to set, establish policy, the whole type of thing. So they're going to have regular monthly meetings, like the school board, where the board representative and one of our administrators will be the defender of those meetings. So it's a public school, regional school.
Do we have, uh, any insight as to, uh, whether we're going to be competitive for, uh, actually providing the fiscal space for it, or have we heard any insights to where, where it might be located?
Sure. So, so currently, there's a, there's a location that's not too far from, from Maggie Walker, that they're securing right now, they're giving this on, this on, it's ten thousand square feet. It's a complete redesign of high school, so it's not going to be a typical high school where there are, you know, classrooms or stuff, um, you know, like, like you would see Maggie Walker, or high schools. Uh, it's going to be a different concept, as soon as we be working collaboratively, and as they circulate through their junior and senior year, they'll actually have internships, working out and feel like computer science and, and, and.
So what we, the, the commitment was to try to keep it approximating, preferably, to, um, say the Richmond and Maggie Walker, so they allow, uh, pairs, allow, pay the back for transportation, since we're only ahead of one, the system.
The next stage, uh, works is, um, we gotta grow it and set it's, uh, or division just to have them stand in the first hundred. To the fact that our number is only having, uh, had more as a replacement. There I got to put on the back, uh, carefully, uh, and this is something in, you know, so that was kind of saying, uh, you know. There each year is possible, it's around, if we submit, uh, any other schools, they seem to be like, uh, too requesting. So, uh, with the opportunity on the road is we can, uh, actually name on the program to actually try to grow it so, uh, get it down, uh, which I don't excuse me. Name is Chanel, funny gave that document, uh, this started last, so those cases where the system doesn't work in favor. Which processes are going with the previous board, with, uh, down to do or die now, we gotta commit, uh, the sign of the document, saying we're not purchasing fifteen seats. All of it, so part of what we need is the board's, uh, authorization for us to sell the chairs that you have. Uh, and we gotta build that house, that cost issue, planning process, uh, you know, banking, water, how to manage. So, and I can't formally commit to the seats now to resign that document. The gracious stuff over, I've said it a couple times, we gotta wait till the board gets seated and, uh, try to, try to, uh, place for the conference, that's all we can do to this document.
So, anticipating?
Just around the, uh, future growth, did the book the capacity, uh, mobility?
The, uh, capacity of the building is, is kind of measured at this point, only because it's a, uh, civilian space. And so, they're, they're looking at that potential load for office and, uh, teams.
So, would you want a mo- what a motion to approve the number of seats and some documents for that? We appropriate it now, or we need to do it by the first?
It would be appropriate now, we gotta build it in. And again, I say we're covering the role, and if I do, I'll keep it, uh, over fluid, with the challenge. But somewhat we're gonna have all this in our process. Again, it doesn't tie up, because even the board will have the final numbers we approved here at the time. So, that's one of the, I just didn't work in, uh, the, uh, the absolute deorganization, the way the forms are in my chair, and superintendent signed up. So, we need to approve this, except.
Well, I would make that motion second.
So, it's been moved and moved by this own and seconded by this door to approve. And give authorization to the chair and superintendent of this school to move forward code RBA that includes.
They're seeing a, uh, three point three, uh, I'm gonna presume, work, uh, that.
Work those latter stages, uh, the celebrations, uh, you know, the checks. So, um, uh, reference, uh, these, uh, different, uh, probably not appropriate this evening, given that we're late from the end.
And, excuse me, the other issue, the last meeting, uh, one sitting, they went back, you know, figured out who was getting most seats, uh, but, you know, he says there, uh, there was something to see. So, I think we had the number twelve, and they were short playing, so, uh, a lot of the continues, I'm stretching it, because, uh, I'm in the middle of transition. I was bored, and it was crazy, except with the school concept, but we never got any to follow the ways, I just needed the confidence. So, I couldn't tell you that there's even opportunity, but I don't have to say it to people, you know.
So, in recognition of that, I'm gonna presume, really, just gonna presume, that there are probably some small, uh, outlined municipalities incorporated in the conversation. Is that, is that correct? And, uh, if there's a road convention, if our friends who live out in, uh, town.
We are one of the larger numbers.
If, if one of those areas where we're unable to fill their obligation, perhaps it would be good if we, uh, even, uh, if we were a very popular, uh, school, uh, would.
Listen, you have a motion, I would say, so you need to, uh, hear your own motion, but also, we see the ears, any more discussion to the most.
Speaking of motion, uh, chairman, um, I fully support this, uh, and I think to the extent that any of our board members have concerns about either the, uh, the number being too high or too low, um, especially if it's too low and, uh, see what seems potentially come available. Um, my experience and, you know, others who have been here before, with many walk-in, have the medics, city council, there's years, years past, have always been very eager to fund additional slots when those come available. Uh, and we, we, the school system has always been, uh, to the university, uh, so, um, makes an extent more comfortable, fifteen, I think we should report. And then, if after we've sent our budget downstairs, more slots become available, or next year, we can always go with the board and, uh, ask for a special, uh, uh, we can somehow do anything to buy this additional slot.
So, do I have a question? The motion is made on this four one second, just like a civil, uh, food, and off the labs, the chair and superintendent to execute documents to accept fifteen slots at code RBA, this goal, yes? Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Fandey?
Yes.
Ms. Corner?
Yes.
Ms. Fandey?
Yes.
Back to the team?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Okay, please, the board, I'd like to go ahead and report with some of the new information. Uh, I know that our, um, our, our method of information exchange, uh, at this moment has been, um, providing a lot of information in one place. Uh, and these will certainly be added, and if pleased with it, we can add all these, uh, new, new pieces of information on the board docs as well. Um, just making sure everybody under, knows, knows how to, how to give the information that we're, we're providing, and, okay. Um, let's go to the next one. We had a discussion at our last, uh, work session, and I think it was initially founded with, um, the bellwether study that talked about seventy-three percent of, uh, our expenditures, uh, were instructional related. And only two percent were administrative related. So, uh, what we wanted to provide tonight is, uh, this, is a chart from the state that talks about funding, uh, SOQ funding for support physicians and instructional physicians. Uh, and it tells you, uh, you can see, uh, it tells you, uh, the number of physicians that the state, based on their calculations, say that we call a buy for, or they, they fund at our half. Uh, and the dollar amount that they pay. Um, both of them, uh, are, uh, less than, uh, by and large, uh, less than, than what, uh, we, we fund, uh, in staff and the school division. Uh, as we talked about how locally inadequate the standards quality are, uh, this would be a document that would be very easy to see, uh, what the state pays for. And then, a, a secondary document that's gonna, at this point, to align our physicians, uh, to these, uh, different categories. That shows how many physicians we actually have by, by these, uh, different categories of, um, physicians. So, uh, at the top, you'll see fiscal seventeen, uh, this was the year we're in. Uh, if, these are the support physicians, as you'll see, um, if we scroll in a little bit, you'll see this, uh, fiscal eighteen, uh, very little change, um, funded physicians at this moment. Uh, before we see the action with the general assembly, are, are projected to go up roughly five positions. Uh, if we scroll down just a little bit more, uh, you'll see all the instructional positions, uh, in year over year. Uh, and if you'll scroll all the way down to the bottom and check on each other totals. You'll see the state, um, uh, for fiscal eighteen on the far right-hand side, I is projecting to fund two thousand sixty-seven, total what they call instructional positions. Um, there, there are a couple of physicians in there that may not seem like the right instruction, librarians, counselors, um, principals, um, but these are the cat- categories of the state. So, we wanted to provide this, so, um, at your work, reader, at your convenience, uh, if you, uh, wanted to take a look through this, and if you had some questions, in particular, based on the second report, then we're gonna show you that you have this. So, uh, we also have some additional information that we'd like to share with you, again, something that has not been, uh, put out. It's in a response to, um, to what we talked about last week. Our budget at this moment, we talked about this, uh, over, uh, there's a lot of numbers on, on these pages. Uh, over on the left-hand side, you'll see four-digit numbers that start with a five. Our, um, our budget normally rolls up with, instead of those four digits, it, it rolls up, uh, under a three-digit number. Uh, and we present it that way because it's really a lot of information for the public to consume, uh, so we try to make it a little bit easier to understand. So, for the board, we wanted to make sure you had the full, complete detail of every school, every department. Uh, we just ran, uh, for this, for tonight, the general fund, but we certainly can run all the other funds. The, the, the way that the, the special revenue fund grants, uh, are laid out and categorized, I think in the budget, it's very easy to understand. We just wanted to make sure that you all had, uh, as complete the details we could provide, the second report, just position for. This, this will tie directly, um, well, this one, uh, this, this one is your whole, uh, position titled by school or by department, and it tells you how many of each of those positions you have at each school or department with its hours and benefits. Uh, you'll see the first one is Carver, um, and you'll see the physicians, uh, that are there. Uh, a tremendous amount of work has gone into trying to make sure that our physicians have our reconcile and are accurate, uh, and reflect all of the board's actions that had every board meeting. Uh, we think that, that we have information that is accurate at this, at this point in time. So, this again, is, is all the physicians, uh, in our general fund, we can obviously run the grants and special revenue funds, if that's something that the, the board would like. We certainly can, um, this is, uh, I didn't really know how, how much time you guys wanted to spend tonight, it was fifteen minutes agenda, so I, I really didn't know how long you guys wanted to go. Um, this one, I think, is gonna, is gonna be the connector. So, this is gonna tie, as you, as you see, just scroll down to, um, the sub-toll. Uh, you'll see, where these tolls will have classroom instruction, uh, you'll see two thousand seventy positions. Uh, these are all of the, this particular categorization of classroom instruction, uh, right underneath of this, uh, you'll see, uh, guided services. So, these are instructional support, uh, social work at home bounds, um, and, uh, you'll see that, that the, the function number, I know there's a lot of numbers on these pages. Everything starts with a one, uh, and a couple of categories start with a two, which is kind of weird, but that's a way to say, uh, roll up, and you'll be able to tell all of these positions, how they roll over to the state categorizations. So, if you wanna go back and, actually, my calculation, um, today was seventy-five percent was instructional. I know that this data that, that was used by Bellwether was a couple of years old, uh, so instead of seventy-three, I thought it was seventy-five. Um, but, but I think the combination of the more detailed legend, the full listing of all the positions, this function crosswalk, and then the, the state coding, um, I, I think will give you a good understanding of how we manage our school system. Um, and, uh, I'm hoping it's gonna generate some questions, uh, as we go forward. So, this is, uh, this is all the new information for, for the board tonight. Um, there's a lot of information that's included in Google Docs, and also, we can put everything that you would prefer on board docs. Uh, or we can put it in a, in an area of our website, if you, if you think that would be better access. So, um, I guess at this point, uh, I'll look to the board for guidance, see if we wanna have some open dialogue and questions, and, uh, the, obviously, the administrative team is here.
Uh, door?
First of all, thanks for putting this together. I have a, and truly, you know, it's great, thank you for responding to this, especially from last week. Um, and we have enough apologies by this, uh, to get access to the Google Doc, and.
You wanna add this to it, or this number one?
Okay, and then, is the topic of our next budget workshop going to be the content of Google Doc, or? I, it would be helpful to note that it has some authority on mine, we're gonna talk about what in the upcoming sessions, um, and that might provide some guidance to you guys, too, about this.
So, Mr. Murray, so the presentation tonight is based on the questions that we split?
They were, um.
Part, partly on, uh, maybe not the.
Right.
Last, right, not the document.
Right, not the document. These were additional questions, and we're gonna go from there if you want, and we'll, uh, just send them out, and held it, if you ask additional questions, uh, to.
Mr. Young, then it's Cosby, and then.
Thank you very much, I think I saw, uh, I think I saw, uh, this, uh, this doctor. You identified variants between, um, the SOU and more professional group, is that right?
I, I have, we can, um, is it, is there, is there an option, you got an absentee, um, uh, like, uh, you know, uh, should, uh, be candid. Um, would you accept, uh, letting us go get more, and give you, give you truthful answer?
Yes.
I mean, I just wanted to show, we have not, we have not received that, uh, uh, quite.
So, now, Jerry, you have, um, two hundred and seventy-five, if you have any questions, so, and we're on hands. So, and to, to make sure this is what you want, and then, uh, this is tomorrow, as I shared with public, with colleagues, uh, it's a pretty long, that's probably a pretty good line. So, we're gonna go, uh, from the bottom here again, uh, and again, it's a part of the, part of what we asked for, and I promise, so, it's, 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 it's up in the air, as well, because we didn't want to hate you, definitely. So, we'll hold this answer, and we'll transmit tomorrow. Mr. Murray?
Before that, have we gotten access to Google Docs? I mean, are we all supposed to be noticing things in Google Docs before tomorrow? Okay, just making sure.
I was making, it's effectiveness is more dots, which you.
Right.
To, the blue line, we developed to put all stuff, make some of those questions.
Okay.
Whether you need the help of.
Right, right, I just making sure there wasn't already something there I wasn't looking at.
They want, you know, you had a little question.
Okay.
We just wanted to respond and show you this, to see what you're getting, and we're gonna load it in there, and if you have some questions, we'll just, uh, no, no, it's a lot. So, if you, uh, you're confident?
Yeah. Yes, I have a little money. Okay, well, these, these will be added, uh, tomorrow, and, um, I, I, I guess we look to the board about guidance for the work session next week about, uh, direction. Um, it, there, there's a lot of information, uh, a lot of, uh, problematic, uh, school performance, student performance information, um, and, uh, I guess we're looking for some guidance, that, that's the direction, like you know, for the next course that.
So, board members, is your question, Mr. Thor?
Um, no.
Mr. Paul?
Yeah, I would love to do a deep dive in the statement of needs and just fully understand how, well, how am I, we're asking for each line item, um, and, and how it's tied, what are the consequences of not having that funded? What is the, right, some, a little, some idea of some prioritization between the items, and especially with regards to the twenty seventeen and twenty sixteen unfunded request. Sort of, some more color as to, presumably, we know that those were cut in the past, but what has been the consequence of not funding those? Um, just to help us advocate to everyone else, um, and to our constituents about what, what we're asking for. So, um, that, I think that would be great use of time, I don't know, I think, I know, it's a great thing, but I'd love to just dig into it and, and get specific, and be detail-oriented about it.
Thanks, you guys?
Yeah, through, and we said, um, to recognize the limitation, or autonomy, whatever that, uh, first, uh, still, uh, developed, uh, and, uh, put your, um, deep dive into student performance, that is pertinent to the, uh, project, uh, I believe, I did, um, this, uh, uh, was working, uh, uh, on, uh, so, uh, so, uh, like, uh, uh, conversation, uh, actually. But next time we together, this not only a conversation, it's supposed to just as the main thing, we're trying to be following that. I think that's what we want to do.
This probably. No, I don't like in the house since that this this is like, I don't think there's so many houses, I think they're becoming a bit of that, we don't know if this conversation, there are a lot of the outcomes of these that happen at the time and that plans is presented in a long, should we write that in terms of activities? And that was just a little top, and I have to tell you, and I know that kind of thing. So the conversation with this conversation and college were going to try to find the question. But I would say the last part is probably more about the the last year. Outcome is very good, um, I should say. The closing of life of funding, the split now, players can be skilled, and there's a full fund, um, money maybe shared with people, but you remember the time that in that time, which is all the members that were there, like we had a mission board on the ground where the one schools that were in Kansas were made, a whole body of three, efficient, most conscious, you know, qualities, they're on a test, but we jumped from eleven seventeen and out of the flower. Because without getting always repetition, we talking about professional development and research behind the app, instead of giving a lot of days, we got free, and then we're doing those types of things. Obviously without tangential, and there's twenty years of research, and when he's like says, there is, there is a correlation, a connection between the teaching and the environment and it takes away from the quality of performance in teacher list. So we know as an impact based on research, um, those quality measures, not just test work, but work, attendance, like privacy, foot field, content and attendance, it was obviously graduation, it wasn't trying to every kid, every child that has also been really pretty believe, that to be eighty five percent match rate for those children. So I think that in the hope of two, there's a whole cloud, and it forms better document also, and when you talk to that items and what is happening, you know, we all know that middle school over age and uncredited, ask the best, what has it happened, who's standing in the middle kid? But hopefully say this is the one that I really like, and that's the only useful conversation, so I'll be confident with feeling that that people that be divided as hard as it is, but we also know that if you're second team, you're blocked out and you're not possible in society, and so it's a philosophical, but you want to see level, you think the bottom that way is, you know, leadership, so also, I'm just talking out loud, saying, if we go from that way, like, you know, you're actually a wild, you started putting in, because the military had to know that to break it out, the oh four point five is a far, you know, always some power, you know, the next one was a kid, it was uh, four plus something, so yeah, that's not part of the, so that nine point five, they really, really, oh, the team building, I want to remember, oh, really, um, asked me the question, little request, out of twenty two. So if you're really saying, you know, you can break it out in a simpler form, you know, the longer that, the longer it was, F Y sixteen, that's why seventeen, we pushed it to twenty two, really, that's a fifteen, I see. So how can you chuck it on that, you know, well, we're really not, I believe, not only that we're helping each other, you know, please, I put it in beforehand, we got to just talk about a few new, which is about uh, three point seven, the other one, but there F Y sixteen, seventeen, rationale, and usually what we found, what's happened, and it was only not doing this, it's intentional, that makes any sense?
Is door had a question? And you see.
Yeah, I think, um, I think that'd be great, you know, with regards to the overage enrollment in middle school, you know, it'd be great to take apart all those, so I have a question, you know, why do we need a principal and a clerical worker and a social worker, you know, and I'm sure there's a good reason for all that, it would just be great to effectively understand, yes.
So we're saying the same thing, I'm just laying out my mind, so you compare, we're on the same page, that's not even a task.
Okay. I think we're all saying the same thing, and I think superintendent's presentation or observation, we're all saying, I think, I just, just in the end, that was sort of the labor, and I still want our conversation to be new ones, and not that age, and if it did not, it was, um, so we're finding, I heard, sorry, um, so we're finding, not finding, not not easy, but I just, I'm very, I'm very sure that it is, to share responsibility is very serious, and we're still taught about it, not just, you know, these types of issues.
I'm here, we're, we're focusing on the way for us, always the specific forums, we have to draw, I'm sure, we have to ask them, it's a good process, so we, that's why we want to, I'm sure, because, how many of you are now, question, is that really, what is, what is the measures we have, so that we hope we're, uh, well, feel effective in some information, and that, I guess you could, this is self sort of, does not, draw.
The board members, let me check in, will you, um, will you follow the agenda? This portion of the agenda, um, was supposed to be pulled at eight o'clock, so I just want to check in with everyone, see, you know, to continue the discussions, or, or on.
We don't have any room to chat, do you guys?
Oh, good. Okay. Well, that ends it.
Ms. Lewis, you've done a fantastic job of keeping us abreast of all the meeting. I somehow got lost on the meeting schedule. Is there a meeting next weekend, the twenty third, at Huguenau?
Yes.
So this is going, the next, um, dates, um, budget work, work sessions? The next one will be on January twenty third, at Huguenau High School. Next one will be on January thirty first, at Holton, Linnwood Holton, and then on sixth of February, Albert Hill Middle School, and we're supposed to approve the budget.
We have a chair, um, well, I think we wanted to perform, not the auditorium.
Correct.
So just so you know, before home, which is about under the place.
And you're gonna, is that, uh, anything?
Just by, just by shortboard.
Right, right, right. Immediate, and cabinet, large, auditorium.
It's on the end. And so for these, our work sessions, having you at Huguenau.
Dr. M, you can speak to, um, the budget work sessions, being advertised in the public?
We put a website, we push out, we social media.
Any more questions for Mr. Myers?
Just one more comment, um, I would, I know we asked a lot of questions, I would be interested in seeing the Google Doc rather than waiting to add additional stuff, so that doesn't, yeah. And thank you, all, I know it's really been a lot, so I appreciate all being patient with our two million questions.
Mr. Myers, I think you're on the team.
We've got a little, little further to go down the road, so we've got more work to do.
It's, it's all good.
Thank you so much.
And want to check in with our student representative, Ms. Madd.
I'm fine, thank you.
And next, I am the manager here, April zero two, received the financial statement before, it would be December twenty first, and then after he is posted off, who does that?
I'm sorry, I wore that.
We're learning, we're learning this a little, so, so we're getting there.
Please, the board, what I'd like to do is, tonight, probably take a little bit more time than normal with our monthly financial report for two reasons, one, this is the first time that we've had a chance to talk students together, the second one is, so you can think about, is this a format that you feel comfortable with, or if there's something about this particular format that you'd like to change. So, um, what we do, historically, is we give some narrative about what's, what's of significant relevance for this particular month, year to date, and we wrote, this is our monthly report through December, and as you can well imagine, it doesn't reflect fifty percent of the year, because most of our expenditures don't start to approve until September, and they end in June, so our, our months from, you know, July and August really aren't very reflective of how we do business. So, a little bit unusual for our presentation, I'd like to jump around this a little bit, I'd like to go to this, um, this is our revenue, you'll be familiar with the two hundred and eighty million, it's on page three, the page number's on the bottom right, um, it's, uh, these are the, the major categories of revenue that we receive, obviously, we can break this down into whatever level of detail you would like to add, but in an effort to try to make this easier to understand for the public, we try to not, try not to put so, to put so much detail. Um, something that may be of note, when you look at the year-to-date percentage, and this is the, the financial statement through December, it shows overall that we've only selected thirteen percent of our revenue, that's pretty much leading because we don't always get our transfers from the city exactly on quarters, sometimes they're a little bit off, and, um, but we have every confidence that our two hundred and eighty million is going to be realized, and we would expect it'll start to catch up in the next couple of months. And to the page four, this is a very high level, and you'll continue to see a scene with these state categories about instruction administration, transportation operations, and you'll see that, again, primarily for the public, we report our budget, and we've got one, one exception to for the public, for this particular school year, but these are our appropriations by category. Um, something that we talked a little bit about, and we'll come back to you when we have all of our, all of our work done, is that we will need to go to city, we'll need to come to you, and then we'll need to go to city council at some point, uh, to, to reduce our destruction appropriation, and increase our transportation appropriation. Uh, this was something that was asked very late in the process last year, and the transportation number is too low, so we know that we're going to need to come back to you in the visit council to have that adjusted. Uh, as we move on, you'll see that these are our expenditures for the general fund by, by major object class, um, the, the things that I think are of note are to continue to look at the percent year date expended and encumbered, and then the balance on the far right. Uh, if we look, um, and we see things that are a very negative number, that means that we, our expenditures are accruing faster than the budget that we have. Um, so one of the things that I think we all know, is that we, we have a number of vacancies throughout the year, so what that means is we have personnel savings in our full-time salary lines, and we typically are over expended in our non-full-time salary lines, because we're using part-timer substitutes. We don't adjust those budgets because we expect to build positions, so we, we just, we continue to see those budget lines, uh, over expended as we go through the year, we know that we've got to cover that at the end of the year. Um, if you go to bottom page five, you'll see a negative four hundred and one thousand on the far right, for student transportation, we know that that's a number that's going to have to be adjusted. Um, same thing over on page six, uh, with our bus, these payments, we talked about that, that the buses are appropriately budgeted in the capital budget, um, but the city, at this moment, is choosing to only fund our capital budget with twenty-year debt, choose through bonds, uh, and buses don't qualify as twenty-year assets. Um, moving on to page seven, I'm going to go back to the front page for the missed moments, uh, these are our capital funds, the big, uh, the big red numbers, um, talk about what year the appropriation was made, um, and then talks about what the current balance is, um, as of December of this year. These roll year to year to year, these don't end each year like everything else in the general fund, they roll every year, and, and I'll pause and just use an example, um, on page seven at the top, Fund Four Ten, uh, you'll see that's a school construction plan, eighteen million dollars that we received, um, and you'll see the budget at seventeen nine ninety-four, and over on the very far right, there's still almost fifteen million dollars in this particular one. However, uh, if you go just, just below it, to the bottom of the page, uh, you'll see ADA compliance that we received in two thousand and eleven for three million one hundred twelve thousand. When we opened this school year, there was only one point five million left, that's all that was left, from the prior years of spending that, to try to meet ADA compliance, um, and today, we still got a million through. So that's how the capital funds work, and we'll move, we'll move ahead to, um, page eleven.
Ms. Myers.
Yes, ma'am?
Answer the question.
Uh-huh.
How many projects are left in the, outstanding?
Goodness, I'm going to have to ask Mr. Krantz to get that information for you, unless he happens to know off the top of his head.
The state's right now, all projects that were presented to the court have been done and completed, we're now in the maintenance phase, um, one of the biggest things on the maintenance has been, um, the rubber ride portions that we put down on playgrounds, that rubber has, um, shown an ability to catch fire pretty easily, um, it's resulted, I mean, I'm not going, I don't want to be quoted exactly, but it's been about ten to twelve playgrounds have been burned as a result of that, so we go ahead and using a different product now today, um, but it's being used in maintenance related, primarily the maintenance.
So we just in the maintenance.
Well, we'll also be doing, John Marshall, uh, in ADA, bringing it from parking lot before the stadium's act, Thomas Jefferson, um, coming off that parking lot into the, um, home side bleachers, doesn't have a good ADA, so we'll be doing an ADA project there, all the elevators have been done, we completed Albert Hill, uh, last year, so all those have been done, it's just really now kind of that maintenance and anything new that we might say. Okay.
The only other part of the monthly report that I'd like to bring to your attention tonight are the grants, the special revenue funds, um, and you'll see that they start on page eleven, um, most of these have a different, different fiscal or financial year, so they approve at a different rate, uh, we also receive award letters at different times, so maybe the easiest thing to remember about these, these are designated for specific purposes, they are only used for the purposes that we receive them, we cannot supply in these funds for anything else, so they are recorded as these fiscal years, um, materialize, but that certainly doesn't mean that I don't want you to ask questions about them, so please do, if something looks funny about any of the grants, um, just call or email or, or just ask me. And, and with that, um, I'm just going to go back to the front, now that we've talked a little, and go back to the summary pages, where now, where we talk about, starting with revenues, about how the revenues are accruing, and then specifically these big areas, that talk about non-contracted principal, I'll use that one as an example, that is a position right now, because we're using assistant, uh, substitute principals and assistant principals, a Carver, Shimmer, Rosa, Fox Green, Swan, Laura Brown, Alcott Thompson, Anderson, I won't read them all, um, and we have lead payouts for retiring administrators, so, um, that's causing this budget to be in, in a deficit position. Um, we want to have full-time people in our positions all year round, we just know that we're just going to turn over, uh, so we have vacancies every day. So th- these are the descriptions, and, um, as we go through a couple of months, maybe, uh, see if you think that this is, um, detailed enough for you, if you think that it's usable for the community, and we want to adjust however you'd like to have it adjusted.
So we're getting feedback, Ms. Myers, and Swart, and Ms. Myers.
I think this is absolutely all my premium encompassed in one, so I thank you for it, and I, I can't think of a single thing more you need to put in there, thank you.
By the way, they examine the purpose, now, just to see if, just to see if, okay.
So the non-contractable care professional line, um, is also from a part-time position down, um, so, um, I understand substitute classes, part-time lines, we're going to come in, it's not understanding that, very part-time positions are.
I'm, I'm going to, uh, offer, uh, my opinion, this early, um, we can ask Mr. Garden, um, to talk about why his choice for part-time versus full-time.
I mean, it's not just our technology, nurses, nursing service first, and then, that's how we use it.
The, the nurses, we have, as you know, additional nursing physicians in the budget, um, so we are using some part-time, uh, nurses at this moment, um, so I was saying on hearing, uh, to step out, if I have to let you know what, what part-time, and sharing off.
This is above what we're creating, that's all we try to.
It is, um.
Next, I will add a man or action lines, man, four zero one, receive for action, but it transfers.
We have just one tonight, we can come before you with budget transfers that are before approval in excess of ten thousand dollars, and or information, um, for ten thousand and hundred, uh, this particular one you will see is for ninety thousand dollars, uh, what we're doing, we're moving full-time salaries, uh, to, um, P C G, Professional Consulting Group, I think is their exact name, um, we have contracted them to try to help us fill, uh, hard to fill, uh, teaching positions, um, we don't have many, I think at this moment, we have two or three, um, so we're bringing this to you, move the full-time salaries from those teaching positions, so we can make the vendor payment to these folks that are providing these teachers for us.
I can look at science teacher part, like the top one? Science teacher one?
I think this isn't there.
Is that one of those placed from the contract service? I think it's more like, is it a contract service, or like, that's a situation?
Thanks for the question, much difficulty, we have fun, science, science teacher, but I appreciate the, the national awareness place to this issue, still specifically in provincial districts in particular, so I'm not, I'm not, but, uh, again, I just, event period, science teacher, I did, I did have, like, me, and us, so at the top, and I'm just, well, I mean, I think, you know, just, see, I can answer your question, there was a teacher shortage, where, where fifty-six vacancies in our district, that's not unique to us, surrounding traditional agencies and science, this is a challenge, she actually knows feet to, uh, some of that, and she comes up in HR portion, one of the things we put in place, uh, this year, was we have a group of P C G, that we have the building for, they'll, maybe, our teachers, bring them in, we get fewer time, and we can actually let the teachers seem very good, and you can say, very, and, or we can absorb them into our, and for the customers themselves, so we tried various, non-traditional ways to try to close that gap, after identifying, we had, one of the things we need to cover is, not only, a number of classes that have subs, and watch their test results come up, so again, trying to, at some point, sub is a sub, and if it's a sub, yeah, you can look down by code, try to always find a specific, a particular teacher, so to, maybe try to close that gap.
Mr. Basel? So, uh, when we, we, so we contracted out with P C G, is this a cost, is this cost neutral pro, so, or, or does this cost more than, than what a vacancy would?
It's pretty costly, we, we budget right at seventy-five thousand dollars for a teacher including full benefits, um, the cost of these folks is forty-eight thousand dollars, um, and a startup fee of sixteen hundred, um, but you also have to add, uh, to that, um, if, any period of that year, that you had, if any other substitute costs that we took much of that, but it's, it pretty much is costing you.
And so, I guess something that I'm concerned about is, uh, pay for the contractors who are actually in the classroom, so, are they getting paid close to what we would be paying a teacher on a salary scale?
Yes, sir, I will.
Maybe this, uh, this is the conversation, uh, sorry, uh, conversation online, so I'm expecting about a time, but I'm curious, if there is a shorthand, so how many folks in the system for the school year, approximately, all part of to, to contract, contract essential?
Through this service? Not yet, we just started, we're trying to get official handles, and try to formally serve our teachers in front of, no, it's not, a lot get, in Florida, honestly, they have challenges, so we haven't had, the return, the good news is, we must pay a rest of the big camera, so that's the positive side, so we're looking at that, and.
So, Ms. Cross, and Ms. Holland, and Ms. Law, um, most of you today, so are these teachers replaced under P G, P C G, they are contract, I mean, they are licensed?
So are these teachers replaced under PG, PCG, who they are contract, I mean, they are licensed teachers? And you mentioned something, so we can try them out, so, so what's the, um, time you're gonna be looking at?
What's the, what's the number of days?
You have between thirty and ninety days to test them out in the classroom. So we can test them in the classroom for thirty to ninety days if the principal, upon further evaluation, decides that there's someone they'd like to keep as a full-time employee. We can convert them from PCG to an RPS employee after that trial period.
Just so you know, thirty-nine days is a thousand, some of the costs for going out and finding a person. And if you see that's how they get, uh, the coverage of the company, please, be lots, okay, work well, and they'll pay. So helps you with the sub. I mean, there's us, you know, you know, after ninety days, we don't, we don't have to convert them. It's the only one under the green badge. It gets to the year itself, and we know, because we would like to purchase them, we know that, uh, the R control models, this is higher.
Well, I was gonna make a motion to approve this, but.
Mr. Balso, that's a question.
Trying to be thorough here. Uh, uh, I'm sorry that that's sometimes, that's at the safe remedy, but, uh, so if we, uh, if we convert within that thirty, that ninety-day period, is there a IO that we're paying, uh, for the remainder of that, that contract?
It is, so we would pay for the service that they provided under PCG, and then we pay a small conversion fee to PCG to convert it to an RPS.
Okay, but it's not a IO.
Not a IO, we just.
A conversion fee.
One, one, one time fee.
I like that version better, too. Uh, and then, uh, we said that we've got three through this, um, through this organization now. I'd like to see in the future how many contractors we have, including Russian alternative, and, uh, things like that, just to get an idea of the scope of our, uh, commitments to contracted organizations. Thank you.
So I move, we move to the budget transfer.
Second.
This is gonna move, uh, the one, and I, Mr. Balso, to accept the budget transfer. Discussion, this is, this is a bean.
Just wondering if we can get a, a list of those educators and, uh, their, for examples, that they are teaching. We can, I, I would think, well, we have, I know these two, I think it's just these two. We have another.
That's all, all the PCG.
This is all we have.
Any further discussion?
The motion is made by Mr. Ball, to approve for the transfer installed.
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Ball? Ms. Stotley? Yes. Ms. Ward? Yes. Ms. Oliver? Yes. Dr. Sepean?
Yes.
And Ms. Fenny? Yes. The next item is nine point zero-three, receive for acting, we need to close this.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, people members, and Dr. Ben. The HR actions for approval tonight include the nomination of eight employees and the change of contract of six and ten years.
Any questions? Motion for approval?
I'm ready to raise.
Okay.
Secular.
Simple, that is all, and send it by, Mr. Ball, to approve the HR action. Any discussion?
Motion is made by Mr. Ball, to approve the HR actions for store. Yes. Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Stotley? Yes. Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Dr. Sepean?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Question pass, it's eight.
I do have one item waiting.
The next item is item ten, the percentage gender, ten point zero-one, to approve the executive judgment, period, two thousand seventeen, they were sent to you, and, uh, what's your report?
Are there any corrections to the minutes? Who is receiving?
The next item is item eleven, new business. The next item is your full section, this is for.
Pursuant to Personnel Section two-point-two, three-seven-one-one, A-one, and Legal Section two-point-two, three-seven-one-one, A-seven, of Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended, I look at the school board and the city of Richmond convening closed session, two first, discuss prospective candidates for employment. One. Discuss prospective candidates for employment and the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers or employees of the division, including consideration of the human resources agenda of this state. And two, consultation with legal counsel and meetings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual litigation, personnel, and student matters, where such consulting or pre-gripping in open meeting would adversely affect negotiating or mitigating posture of the school. All of favor?
Aye.
Problems? And I suppose with the four, I would like to thank our student representative, Ms. Macklin. We have so, please, report dependency and action set. We have a mom, sister.
That's my mom.